All right, uh, I'll go to the floor. Tim, you want to introduce our speaker?
I am.
Oh, all right.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and for those of you staff and colleagues that have joined us today, thank you for this time. As you know, I am your interim administrator, Takiya Dowson. With us today, we have Mr. Douglas, also known as Doug, Gephardt, Vice President of Public Finance from our fiscal conservatory, Davenport Public Finance. Davenport today will be walking us through our upcoming bonding season. This is a time in which Augusta is prepared to go to the bond market. When the commission approves SLOSS A, it came with it several projects in which the commission expressed an interest in bonding. While some of those projects have changed, we want to make certain that the commission was well aware of what those projects would be or what staff is recommending that we move forward bonding today. Some of those would include projects from Parks and Recreation as well as Augusta Utilities. We'll be more than happy to field questions because before the list is finalized, you will be making a public vote to that effect. We've also drafted some additional items later on in the calendar. We'll be more than happy to go over those as well. We also have Tim Williams, who is the Deputy Finance Director, that will be assisting us with any questions from Augusta. What did I say?
The combination of Donna and Tim.
My apologies, Tim Trader. Thank you for that. In my mind, I said Trader. So now I'll turn it over to Doug. Thank you.
Again, thank you for the introduction. I guess I'm sitting here, Tim Trader. Again, Doug Gephardt with Davenport. Great to be in front of you all again. Some familiar faces, some this is my first time giving the chance to meet all of you. Again, we are, I'm with Davenport Company, the city's financial advisor. I think that was a great introduction. And what we want to do today is just review some financial health items and also what goes into a bond issuance. We are getting ready and talked about potentially issuing some bonds, but maybe spending a few minutes about what the process is, how do you do it, what goes into a bond rating, things of that nature, so that if and when the time does come to go finance some projects, you guys are all well informed and ready to proceed with moving forward. So with that, I'll sort of jump right in and start with a overview. We talked a lot about this. Also, given a market update, as you're well aware, the market's been a little turmoil, so given it's just a brief example, kind of walk through what is going on in the bond market and tax exempt and intaxable borrowing rates as well. So Davenport, again, we're a regional financial advisory firm with offices all throughout the Atlantic and Southeast region. I am based out of our Roswell office and pleasure to be here today. We are the number one advisor in terms of transactions. That's how we measure sort of, you can see well on top of the rankings. As the city's financial advisor, there's a number of different things that we help the city pursue, and these include transaction execution, reviewing economic development. But most important is credit rating, fiscal health, and developing that planning and analytics. Debt capacity, debt affordability, what goes into a debt issuance, and making sure that your strategic is not only cash in hand, but in the borrow rates that are going to be up. When we serve as advisor, we went through a lot of these, but there's a lot of capital funding strategies, monitor and provide guidance on financial policies, look at bond refinancing if there's opportunities where interest rates do allow for those types of things to occur for debt service savings, and a number of different things which are on this page. I know there's a lot of information, so I'm going to be really quick on some of these different slides. We represent folks all over the state of Georgia, the number one advisor in the state in terms of number of clients we represent, from big to small, Augusta to Columbus, to something as small as the city of Ashburn, not too far away. Davenport served as the city's financial advisor since 2016. We've advised on close to $250 million through over 10 debt issuances, and part of those we did also refinance, resulting in over $40 million debt service savings for constituent sub-sisters. So we're proud to be a part, a small part of the team. In addition to debt transactions, we also do a number of things sort of behind the scenes, working closely with finance staff. They do a lot of the heavy lifting, but we provide day-to-day guidance as needed. And those things include, but aren't limited to, rating reports, looking at refinancings, doing fund balance reviews, cash defusing some existing outstanding debt. So you name it, if there's something more detailed on capital and finance related, Davenport's generally going to be involved in helping the city through that. So we talked about the upcoming projects that the city is looking to finance. And the main driver of why we're here today is to help provide that framework for if and when we do come to you all, you've been briefed on what's coming forward. So the first one that we're going to be looking forward to do is the SLOSS bonds. So as you may recall, back when the voters approved the renewal of the SLOSS, they authorized up to $30 million of general obligation bonds for the issuance of debt supported by the sales tax. We estimate that that timeline for issuance is going to be in the second quarter of this year. So we're in the process of getting that started. We're actually working to get the rating agencies to come down to tour Augusta. It's been a number of years since they've at least reviewed us, and they have not been to the city since 2017. So all of the recent economic development successes that have been occurring, particularly in downtown, with the cyber and Augusta University and the medical center, all those things, we want to be able to take them down and really show it off while they do perform the rating on that one. And then the next is water and sewer on the utility side. There's some potential new money that we're working through Wes and his team to finalize a capital improvement plan to come forward and present the plan of finance. And then there are some bonds that are eligible to be called now that we've reached a particular call date. But as you know, market conditions dictate whether or not that refinancing can take place or not. So we're going to continue to be monitoring that and be ready to take advantage of interest rates if and when they cooperate for that. The Coliseum Authority, as you're well aware, right now is going through the General Assembly for the renewal of the C SLOSS. If that does get approved, then we'll likely be coming back to the commission for the approval of those bonds up to 250 million. And then lastly, is the solid waste has some debt outstanding to get. If market conditions warrant a refinancing, we will be in a position to take advantage of that, and if there's any new money needs, to take advantage of synergies to do it all at a single issuance. So in theory, as many, we're anticipating two issuances this year, could be as much as four, but we're working in earnest right now on getting started for the upcoming $30 million SLOSS transaction. And again, this is meant to be interactive, so if you guys have any questions along the way, please feel free to stop me and I'll do my part.
I did want to, Doug, if you will go back to that slide, I did want to point out the SLOSS bonds up to 30 million. The commission with SLOSS A approved about $14 million for potential bonding for the depot project. As you know, that particular project has some uncertainty around it. And so because of that, if there's any additional discussion surrounding what would we do with those funds that will happen outside of this meeting? So I did want to point out that $14 million, which is a large part of 30 million dollars, were not, were not put into fruition as originally planned.
The SLOSS bonds will be supported by SLOSS proceeds, as you all know, collections have been working very well on that front. So ultimately, that'd be the source of repayment for those particular bonds. So a brief market update, as you've probably heard of the last few months, or even since the start of last year, interest rates have began to rise on us. And so the left-hand side of the page, you can see on page 12, is the tax exempt interest rate, which is called the AMF, 20-year rate. On the left-hand side of the page is going back to 2000, so roughly the last two decades or so. And the right-hand side of the page shows where we've been since the start of 2020. So while rates have risen, and it does feel like they have risen since the pandemic, when comparing it to near historical levels, we're really in the rates where we were in the mid-2012, 2018 range. So really in that post-financial crisis interest rate range is where we are today. So to put some perspective on, and at those, at that time, that was the lowest rates I've ever been. So we felt really good when we were going to market then. We're not at the low lows that were in the sub-1% or 1% loans, but still a pretty darn good interest rate environment. Tax exempt rates, this is just a little more zoomed in on different parts of the yield curve. The bottom part here is the five-year, the top is the 30-year. So what you can see that has happened with the Fed really increasing these short-term rates is that there was a pretty big gap between the five-year and the 30-year, and even the five to the 10-year. But with the Fed moving and pressing these rates upwards as a result of trying to combat inflation, there's really been a compression amongst the yield curve, meaning that there's really not that big a difference between super, super short-term rates and long-term rates. Whereas before, you'd be, as a natural shaped yield curve, the longer you go out, the higher the interest rate is. So overall, that's what's happening that, and what this little blip that happened at the end is that that's the result of the bank failures that occurred over the last week. And that's what we're really going to show on this page. So never want to, you know, misfortune, but one of the results of the misfortune of SVP, Signature Bank, amongst the others that are feeling some pressures, is that it's put some mitigating efforts on the Fed, increasing interest rates, and it also has driven a flight to quality amongst investors. And so over the course of just last week, the, in this particular case, the one-year treasury has gone from close to five and a quarter down to four and a quarter. So that short-term rate has dropped by over 1% in just a week's time. So it's been a pretty volatile market. We're continuing navigating this, but want to be, again, be in a position to have these conversations today, so if and when interest rates do cooperate with us, we have a position to maximize on those segments. So that's a brief market update. Any questions before I go to a brief financial health interview? Okay? Here are none. This is just the city's general fund over the last five years from the audit-in perspective. We want to compare an apples-to-apples basis, so didn't include any unaudited 2022 data. But the bottom line on this particular page is that revenues have been growing over the last five years, but expenditures are growing as well, and that's to be expected. But the reality is, over the last five years, the city's in this blue line at the bottom has increased its fund balance position, or its net change in fund balance on a year-over-year basis. This is a kudos to you all as commissioners, but also staff as well, to having conservative budgeting practices. That's one of the things when rating agencies do come and review us, they want to know what's the budgetary practices. And so continually showing that revenues are coming in over expenditures on a year-over-year basis is a credit positive, and it's something that we're really going to be able to share with the rating agencies when they come down in the next month or so. So kudos to staff, conservative budgeting, the management processes. So obviously, as you have surplus revenues over expenditures on a year-over-year basis, that leads to fund balance, right? And this is one of the most, I think, the most important things that the rating agencies look at when evaluating financial health of particular cities. And so in addition, just to providing a, what we would call a rating day fund, to be able to use for other types of unanticipated expenditures or one-off projects, it's also there to provide emergencies. It also can be used to fund pre-funds and capital projects if we need some time to go to before getting to market. Additionally, unlike you and I, where we get paid every two weeks or one month, whatever it is you get paid, you know, Augusta generally speaking gets paid once a year. So you have to have enough fund balance to be able to carry those revenues to last the entire fiscal year, so you're not having to go borrow what's called a tax anticipation note to fund those short-term revenues. And so fund balance is an extremely important, probably the most financially thing that these folks look at in terms of credit health. And so this is just a look back of the city's fund balance over the last 10 years, and I think this tells a really telling story, is that coming out of the financial crisis in 2011, 12, there was some, there was some pressures, and it wasn't atypical to see a little bit of lag in the economy in Georgia. So you can see, coming out of the financial crisis in 2008, 9, 10, fund balance were at high levels, but then we had to use some of those fund balance, and then in 14, you know, then the ice storm happened. So that's sort of what caused that fund balance down to drop. But over the course of the last, really, five fiscal years, that fund balance has really decided to grow, right? And so the city's old policy was between 90 and 120 days. They were now meeting those policies and in top of the higher, the higher edge. But just recently, we know you all approved the 120 to 150-day policy, which will put you more in line with the higher rated credit peers. And what we found in doing some research and looking back at the various rating reports from the last time we reviewed, which is in 2017, 2018, a lot of them had commentary on fund balances. So you see, "Continue to increase and maintain fund balance, clients with a formal policy." So fund balance was a really, really important thing. So kudos to you all for taking those hard steps to increasing that fund balance, because I really think it is going to position us greatly for the conversations with the rating agencies as we get ready to go finance our capital options. Here are no questions, I'll keep going. Again, just big picture overview. Right now, this is a big, big picture overview of the city's outstanding debt portfolio. So we broke it down into a few different sections, what we call tax-supported, self-supporting, and then certificate of participation or leases. Tax-supported is one where Augusta's, the intergovernment grant, intergovernmental agreements are really the backstop for the payment. The middle self-supporting is where there's a dedicated funding source, and the leases are sort of a different section of debt. So all in total, you know, just under 100, or just over 120 million of debt outstanding. But a good portion of that is going to be paid off, which we'll get over here in the next few pages. This is just a big picture overview. If you do happen to get a debt statement or a debt repayment, there are a few anomalies. This explains the anomalies, and largely, they're either going to be refinanced or paid off from existing sources of funds. And then, as you all know, as part of the SLOSS approvals that the constituents approved was to help retire debt. And so here are three issuances in particular. You have the URA Series 2014 bonds, which were used to finance this, this building. That was included on the SLOSS list, and so this will be paid off. They can be called on October 1 of 2023. So we will be in a position to work with staff to utilize the SLOSS seven proceeds to redeem those bonds. So all this interest here, roughly four and a half million dollars, will be going away that because those bonds were borrowed, will no longer pay interest. So that's direct statements to constituents. So that's another thing. While not technically a bond issuance, it is bond-related, and it is something that we'll share with credit agencies, that roughly 20 million of that is going away. The next one is the parking garage bonds that we did for the cyber facility through URA. Again, those were a SLOSS-approved project, so as collections begin to come in, and we feel like we have enough funds on hand, we'll be working with Tim, Donna, and the city administrator to facilitate the payoff of those bonds in 2024. So while, 25, sorry, 25. So we'll have collections in '24 and then paid off in 2025, is what we're anticipating on that front. So while there is just over 100 million outstanding, this is 20, 21 plus 16, 37 million of that is anticipated to be gone within the next two to three years. That's a really good thing to be able to share, which is great. So now that's, we've gone, any questions about general financial health, bonds, debt outstanding in cities, capital vision, anything back? Okay? I'll move on to capital planning. Here we are, thinking about, talking about capital planning, and there's really a few stages. One is, we analyze all the funding sources. That's sort of what we've been doing here that helped put this all presentation together and a part of the budget process. Phase two, you review it, then you prioritize the project, then you finalize the CIP, and you do it on a year-over-year basis. And so that's a pretty typical capital planning portion, and we encourage you and staff to continue to do that into the future. Generally, what Davenport's role in the financing process, we like to think of ourselves as the quarterback for the financing. So ultimately, what we do as a city's financial advisor is develop the plan of finance, really understand the next phase is the credit rating process, and then really coordinate schedules and make sure that we're pointing, as the quarterback, each participant in the right direction to make sure that all the necessary regulatory, legal, and meeting deadlines and financial deadlines are being met in order to facilitate the most advantageous capital plan or cost of borrowing. So that's generally the role of the financial advisor in that process. We've been, again, serving that since 2016, and we generally do a competitive sale, which we put it out the bid to get the lowest possible rate. We want the sharpest pencil on that. Or through a direct bank loan, RFP, where we're shopping out the local, regional, and national lending institutions, again, making sure that we're on buys in our financing approach really, to get the lowest cost of funds. There are a few other members of the bond issuance team that are pretty involved on a day-to-day basis. On the finance side with Augusta is Donna and Tim. They're our primary folks on governmental, and then Wes and Steve on the utility side if and when we do a utility issuance. We're the financial advisor. Again, my colleague, Courtney Rogers, is a senior member of our team. He's had a back surgery, would have loved to have been here today. But you get me in his place, and then we have a junior associate, Christopher Holt. There's a local counsel, Jim Plunkett, also known as Issuer's Counsel. He handles a lot of the reviewing documents, really on behalf of Augusta, and coordinating all the legal things that need to happen and local court system. So every time you have to issue a bond, it has to get validated in local courts, and Jim handles a lot of that processes. And then bond counsel, the city's historically used three different firms, Murray Barnes Finister, Butler, Schneid, Smith, Kimbrel, Russell. A bond counsel's role is to draft all the necessary resolutions and provide their tax opinion, which allows us to go issue bonds on a tax-free basis instead of a taxable basis, having that interest rate. So that's the general bond issuance team. So you get one of us, you get all of us, or vice versa. Each one has their own pretty specific roles in the financing process. There's a lot of decisions that get made in going into a borrow, and how do we achieve that lowest cost of borrowing? Is it a long-term borrowing? Is it a short-term borrowing? Do we need the money now? Do we need it two years from now? What are interest rates like? So part of what we work with staff in determining the next steps is putting all of these decision points into a blender and really trying to spit out what is the best way to go do that. There's not always a one-size-fits-all answer for each individual financing, but oftentimes there is sort of a trump card where it says, hey, because we need prepayment flexibility such as Beacon Station object or something like that, it lends yourself down a particular path to allow to do that. So with the SLOSS bonds, we're planning to go out to the market, do a competitive sale, and have the bond rating agencies come down here. That's where we think we're going to get the lowest, the lowest cost of bonds. And then, once we go and do do an issuance, how do we know who's going to issue it? As we talked about earlier, there's an urban redevelopment agency, the Coliseum Authority, the Augusta's SLOSS Augusta Utility, you know, all these solid ways. How do you know who's going to go issue the bonds? Well, first, you need to determine what the project is. Then it leads yourself to going, is it a GEO bond? Is it an intergovernmental revenue bond? Is it a SLOSS bond or pure revenue bond? Each one of those has its own different nuances. I would love to say that we, Augusta would always be able to go out and borrow on itself, but unfortunately, the constitution does not allow for that. And so oftentimes, if and when we're borrowing for governmental projects, we need to find a conduit issuer that has the legal power to borrow for that type of particular project. So that is what we do, is first determine the project, then decide how to fund it, then whether it be a bank sale or a public one. These are a little more information on the differences between a bank loan and a public market issuance. Not going to go into that much detail, but it's there for your for resort if you want to evaluate the differences in the pros and cons for each one of those approaches. And again, here's the different types of bonds with some basic key characteristics for each type of issuance. Again, not going to go into great detail here, but the information is there if you want to go and issue it. Look through it. But there are two bonds that require voter referendum. Those are GEO bonds and SLOSS bonds. The other ones can be done without a voter referendum. So big picture financial timeline, generally speaking, it's a 60 to 90 day from the time of issuance. So here we are, talking about second quarter next year. We're sort of at the start of that, in that 90, 60-day timeframe. And so what we're doing right now is developing the financial plan, getting all the appropriate approvals from the elected bodies, and going forth. The next phase is really developing the documents and the credit, the credit side of things. So whether that's a bank RFP or official statement, that's sort of in that second phase. Then a month, month out, you're really going into finalizing the projects. What are the final costs of the actual projects? What are we going to finance? And then getting our rating back. And then, within the month, you price the bonds. On the day of the sale, we generally get, ask, come to you all for approval on that day. And then from there, it's roughly a three to four week timing for closing, which is when money hits your bank account and is in Augusta's pockets ready to be spent. And so here's a typical process. We talked a little bit about this. There's really 10 steps. We call it the 10-step program. Again, finalizing it, then asking you all to approve the final project list. Then generally, we have a kickoff call between staff and through parties we mentioned earlier, and then go through these things back. Rating agency meetings, again, we are planning on having them come down here in just about a month or so and tour to really show off Augusta. Then we have a meeting to approve it. Bond validation, that's that legal process that is done through the court system, and then ultimately close the debt issuance as well. Talked a lot about credit rating. We feel like we're in a good position. Augusta's credit rating is basically double A, two were double A across the board from all three rating agencies, movies, SRD, and Fitch. We generally prepare a formal rating package that contains all the developments happening, all its financials that go in there, and we really believe that there's a face-to-face meeting is the best way for us to get that done. Then we act as the liaison with staff to answer any questions that they may have on the credit side. Flipping ahead, in the interest of time, go through Flipping ahead, in the interest of time, go through some different rating methodologies. There's two different, two different methodologies. There's a, what we'll call a GEO or governmental rating methodology, and then there's a water and sewer methodology. So what we've included in this particular GEO methodology are the metrics that get looked at in terms of what goes into a bond rating. And so what you can see and talk about earlier is the financial measures as we're preparing for this is budgetary flexibility and budgetary performance makes up twenty percent of the rating with S and P. And then the liquidity, which is essentially fund balance, makes up ten percent of your overall rating on the S and P side. So when thinking about how you perform on a year-over-year basis and how your fund balance is trending, that's over thirty percent of the rating, which you and staff have really direct control over. Economy, that's, that's not only development, but it's also demographic, unemployment, income levels, things like that. Things we have little control over, some control, but not little. Think of it as steering, turning a cruise ship, right? You can point in the right direction, but you can't flip it around overnight. So that's why we think what you've done in terms of the way your finances have performed over the last five years and the fund balance are really going to be fruitful for us in the rating conversations. Moody's just went through a new methodology change, and very similar here, the different percentages, but that fund balance ratio, instead of only being ten percent in the past, is now twenty percent. So they've actually increased the importance of fund balance in this newest methodology. The next few pages, again, I'm going to skip here because I don't want to get me on time, but GEO methodology, a lot of the observations from the last time we rated, which, believe it or not, was back in two thousand and eighteen, so it's been five years since we've had a formal rating discussion. But a lot of the things that they measured as things that could lead to an upgrade, not saying that we're not going to, I think maintaining the rating for us this time around is good, given it's been a number of years, but the things that they did say that could lead to an upgrade are done. The tax base has grown, and the general fund reserves and liquidity have improved. So those are the two things that they mentioned in their last rating report. Again, I think if we maintain double A two, given where we are in this current market environment, give all the pressures, I think that's fairly solid rating from this standpoint. S and P, again, very, very similar things is we work to improve our financial policies, so hopefully we'll get an improvement from good to standard with this adoption of these new financial policies. Skip Fitch. And then wrapping up here, we just hit briefly on the utility fund. Similar to, I know there's a lot of numbers here on page forty-eight, but historical debt service coverage ratio, I think a debt service coverage is sort of eliminating all the non-cash weighted items. How much dollars do you have left over to, after you pay, your revenues come in, you pay your operating expenditures, how much is left to pay debt service? And so you can see that the debt service coverage has been, been very strong over the last few years, but that's partially due to refinancing that we did back in two thousand and seventeen, which held the, which the savings were taken upfront to having to prevent the need to borrow for new money. So traditionally, a refinancing is taken over a long period of time, but knowing the utility department had new money needs, rather than going borrow those funds and have to pay for it over a thirty-year period, we said, hey, let's take our refinancing, let's take the money upfront, save it, so we're not having to pay the interest from that. So because those savings are taken upfront, that certain, that debt might start to ramp up over the next few years, and so we need to be mindful of that. But again, the debt service coverage is pretty strong relative to the peers. We included all the double A and A-rated peers in the state of Georgia. The other important metric here is historical days cash on hand. The way that we measure cash or fund balance levels on, this is on page fifty, is days cash for utility systems, so it's equivalent fund balance policy on the water sewer side. And so it's saying, if you weren't giving the revenues, how many days could a utility system operate? And generally speaking, utilities have higher days cash on hand levels than governments do. That's pretty typical. So what you can see here is on the days cash on hand, despite having over two hundred days, which is over fifty percent a year, for the higher rated peers, they tend to have much, much higher cash levels. So if and when Les ever does say we need rating purposes to ensure our operations and build our cash, you can see that it's not out of line for the peers and the, can you go back one slide?
Certainly. Wait a minute. You have your years laid out from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one with unrestricted cash. In twenty seventeen, you started off with eighteen, there's a seven hundred and eighty-one, and let's go to twenty nineteen, you had forty-eight million one eighty-eight, but your operational expenses for the years, fifty-seven million. Now you step over to twenty twenty, you drop down to thirty-two million four, but your operational expenses also drops by considerably to fifty-two. What made that drop in cash assets right there? And then if you go to the twenty twenty-one, same thing, your operating cost has not changed, but your cash on hand has. What's changed in that return?
Yeah, I think, let's see, I'll try to answer it and let him correct me if I can. As I mentioned it earlier, when we refinanced the bonds in two thousand and seventeen, they, there was a big savings that occurred. So there weren't as large of debt service payments. So because we weren't having to pay, I'm making up a number, let's say it was, our debt service payments were twenty million. We refinanced it, and so the debt service payments were now at ten million. Again, I'm just making up numbers. That's a ten million dollars of savings in that fiscal year that we realized upfront. And so over the course of the three-year period, those cash balances were built up purposely, right, to, as a result of that refinancing. So the cash levels were purposely built up, knowing that they were going to be spent down for capital projects, rather than, back in two thousand and seventeen, the alternative would have been borrowing all the money, not refinancing it, taking the savings over a twenty-year period, but then having to borrow the same cash levels. So it's built up purposely as a result of the refinancing that was undertaken, and then spent down for capital. And then on the operational side, I think that should cause it, it's the services fluctuate on a year-over-year basis based on chemicals, deflections. Thank you. Again, just a few different other observations in terms of cash coverage from the rating agencies that you all can review. Again, it's been, their report was in two thousand and seventeen, so it's been equally as long a time. So one of the things that we're going to do when they come, come down is that we're going to have a, both a governmental and utility analyst come, so we are going to sort of, they kill two birds with one stone, and be able, so if and when we do go to market in the second half of this year for any utilities, we will have an analyst there.
Commissioner Johnson. That's my answer.
Very good. Again, this is the, the utility that outstanding just north of four hundred million, but the debt repayment is actually pretty fast. Generally speaking, utility systems have thirty-year issuances, so on a, if they only have nineteen years left as a measurement, it's pretty, pretty strong. So you can see that debt service jumps back up starting in this year, in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. But there's some drop-offs that occur later on that might allow for some creative structuring of debt to minimize any potential major impacts on user rates. That the plan ratio just, just measures the debt outstanding as a result of the assets. The next few pages just talk about, again, the different methodologies that the rating agencies use for each one of these different bond deals. We believe that we're in a good position, but again, financial straight days cash on hand, fifteen percent of the rating. So fund balance, cash is very important, as we're thinking about going forward for our next conversation. S and P, very similar with their rating methodology on the utility side. There's a enterprise and financial risk performance. Again, this one, there's two different halves of it, the financial half, forty percent of the financial half is made up of liquidity and, and performance. So overall, a pretty important metric. So as you can see, there's a lot of things, a lot of decisions that go into, I think the rest is just commentary, in the legal leagues. But I think our, our sort of big picture takeaway that we wanted to get in front of you all today is that we're preparing ourselves to go to the bond market. There's a lot of different people involved, there's a lot of different processes involved, and it's not something that can just be done overnight, you know, from start to finish. Generally speaking, sixty to ninety days from the time you all say to go, but that takes, that's generally done after a year or so of planning to get there. And so we want to make sure that we're a front communicator, so you understand how the bond issuance work, get a big picture overview of the financial health of the city, and, and really let you know that Davenport's here to be your fiduciary. Unlike some folks that are underwriters that are only there to sell debt, Davenport is legally bonded to be the city's fiduciary, where we have to put your interest ahead of our, and so when we are making accommodations or changes, it's really to be in your best interest for not only the short-term goals once made to the commission, but also taking any potential long-term effects as well. And I'll stop there. Tim, anything that exists that you want to add before we sort of wrap up and maybe go back through the slides?
No, particularly.
Okay.
Doug, I did want to add something. So in my past professional life, I was the one on the table, at the table that sold the debt, wanting to make sure the customer financed as much as possible. But in this particular instance, because we are now the customer, it's essential that we are cautious on what projects we select to bond. And in doing so, we want to make sure that those projects are what the financial world deems a shovel-ready, in that we have as much of the infrastructure completed as far as architecture and engineering is concerned, or site planning work, or just as much as possible before we go out and bond ten, fifteen, twenty million dollars that we would have to start paying for that won't be used until several months down the line. There was a conversation with the commission several months ago in which, I want to say it was Commissioner Fram that stated he was interested in seeing what the numbers would look like if we added the Parks and Recreation lighting project to the list. Is there still any interest in doing that? As you know, that there was a lighting assessment done several years ago, which uncovered many deficiencies throughout some of our Parks and Recreation facilities. Is there any interest in seeing where or how a project of that magnitude would look?
You're asking us?
Yes.
It might be better to ask the entire body, that way you get a better feel for it.
Well, and of course, the numbers will come to the entire body, so right now, this is just a work session to talk it through. If this is something, even the few of you that are here today, is that something that you would be interested in seeing?
Commissioner Dawson, I think a good question to maybe start off with is, what projects do you consider as to be shovel-ready before, I believe if I'm understanding correctly, we need to keep that in mind. And so do you have any projects at the top of your mind that kind of start, that, you know, kind of guide the conversation, which projects do you think are ready to go?
Sure. The first project would be the RCCI jail construction project. SLOS has already approved it for eleven million dollars. It was already on the list for bonding potential. Central Services has been working with the selected A and E firm to handle the plans for what that would look like. The second project would be Fleming Park. That has recently come before the commission, and let me back up. The RCCI project was slated for eleven million dollars. It's going to require some serious value engineering, because when eleven million dollars was approved, I want to say pre-COVID almost, construction costs were significantly less than what they are today. The Fleming project was slated to be about five million dollars. Maurice presented some diagrams on what that project looked like. Again, it very well may be more than five million dollars. As I stated before, the Depot project, which was slated for, I want to say, twelve million dollars, fourteen million dollars, thank you, that one should be taken off the list at this particular point. So there still is some room for us to see how we would like to craft that. And finance, as well as myself, will be working closely with Davenport to get you all a package together, but I wanted to know, was there anything in particular that this selected body, or this abbreviated body, I'll say, had any interest in seeing? And if not, staff will present what we feel would be the better package deal as to what is shovel-ready. So Commissioner Johnson, to answer your question, those are the two that we know that we've been pushing. A third could easily be the Fleet project, however, that already went out to bid, came back significantly over budget. It's going to require some serious changes as far as what was accounted for in SLOS versus what the budgeted numbers came back. I want to say it was more than five times over budget.
When you say Fleet project, you're talking specifically to which project is that?
To the Fleet construction project of a combined facility for fleet maintenance for both the fire department as well as what's on Broad Street and Tobacco Road.
Sixteen dollar project?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, colleagues?
You mentioned, I think, just with what you just, but I, yeah, I don't think we can make a decision or really say, because we don't know what, I, I think we can start thinking about it and get back with you probably in the next commission meeting, so we'll have some time to, because we, I can name ten right now that I want to see, but I don't think we should, I don't think we can make a sound.
I think your priorities are already set forth by what jobs some projects really go. And then we can add to the list based on which, whose district needs what, you know, that Mason needs to get his backyard fixed, that's a big issue. We're going to have to look at Lake Homestead, but nothing's shovel-ready. So you do have two projects that are shovel-ready, and then we just add to the list. I think that'd be the best, I think.
And, and keep in mind that I, that the intention of this work session today wasn't for the body to make any decisions. It was merely just to talk through what your interest would be, what, where do you see those interests lying? Initially, when we came to the table, we were hoping to do both general fund and utility at the same time. That plan has changed, so utilities will be much further down the line, as Doug stated earlier in the presentation. So, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. So I, I understand what constitutes a shovel-ready, but what's a timeline for shovel-ready? I know you mentioned that architect, those plans have to be in place, and, you know, I guess the project has to be vetted, so to speak, but what does a timeline look like? Three months, six months, twelve months? If there's something that we want to get done, how long does it take it to get shovel-ready? Or does that vary according to the project?
I think it does vary according to the project.
When we issue tax exempt debt, we have to certify or state that we will, we're anticipating on spending borrowed bonds within three years. So it's now we have to go. So it's not we have to go out and build it tomorrow, but we have to borrow those funds, or spend those funds, anticipate a bunch within three years. Otherwise, we're going into an issue called arbitrage. The US government is now one of those going off borrowing money at a real cheap rate, going and investing and making a bunch of interest and never paying taxes on it. So it's a, look at it as a three-year window. So once we borrow those funds within three years, we should have the project completed or mostly completed.
But my question is, and I'm going to rephrase it, in order to even, before I even get to that point, to make my project shovel-ready, so then I can get to that step, how long does that process take?
It does vary depending upon project because that also takes into account our procurement process. But in general, if it's a new construction project, we can procure a contractor within a two- to three-month period, select that contractor, vet that project, say another six months, and then probably within anywhere between nine to 12 months, have construction plans for a project to be ready for construction. So for instance, the Fleet project, and even Craig Holton, I'll take for example, at Craig Holton Elementary School for Juvenile Court, construction plans are still not final. And Central Services began working on that project last summer.
Any other questions, Commissioner Collins, any more to take?
Okay, so staff will get together with some projects and then we will present those for your pool. Thank you for your time.
Next committee cycle, are we talking, next committee cycle, a couple committees we have?
A couple of committees. All right. No, nothing else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation.